Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting this December 4th, 2018. We have all seven members of the Commission in attendance for a full quorum. We welcome public and staff and those who are viewing online and hope you enjoy the meeting this evening. The first item of business is our consent calendar consisting of approval of amendments from our previous meeting of November 20th and the Affordable Glass preliminary site plan. Commissioner Quinney?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would like to move that we approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Green?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner DeGreen. Is there any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero, bringing us to our first public hearing this evening. Aurora Heights subdivision, 8157 South Maple Leaf Way, preliminary subdivision plat of 78 lots on 26.06 acres in an R110E zone. Garbett Homes, Aurora Heights, L.C., Paul Garbett is the applicant. Thanks for being here this evening. Please come forward and present your application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Richard Welch, VP of Land for Garbett Homes. Paul is in Mexico on a humanitarian mission, so he couldn't be here tonight. We have worked with your staff to put together the technical drawings for the preliminary plat after we successfully got your endorsement and the council's approval of the rezoning for this property several months ago. We understand all of the conditions. We're excited to build this subdivision in your community. Have built many before this one. Always enjoy working in West Jordan. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, just for curiosity, because it came up when their pre-meeting, why are we doing two phases in this? And do we have a plan for phase two? Just curious.
Yeah, I think it's in your packet if you keep going. There it shows you both. We're doing two phases just because of the size of the property and the phasing lines we worked out with your staff so that we did connect the north and the south in the first phase. So you immediately have that connection, or you'll have that connection in the first phase and then finish up with that group of lots for phase two.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you, Chair. The lots in phase two appear to be somewhat smaller than the others. Are they?
This is, I couldn't tell you lot by lot, but they all are in compliance. So they're at least 10,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. If there's anything that comes up after the public hearing, you're welcome to come back up and answer any questions that might arise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Page, you have this item for the city?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This property was rezoned by the city back in June, and now what we have before you is a preliminary subdivision plat. Staff has noted a few, I guess, cosmetic changes that can be addressed in the final plat. If you have any particular questions of some of the notes that are in your packet, we'd be glad to address those at this time.
Well, thank you. Since we have Mr. Baranowski here, our traffic engineer, is there anything that you would like to add relative to traffic?
We did review the traffic calming plan for this project, and we put in at least one, two, three speed tables. Four? Sorry, four. And we did that to break up the length of the blocks. So there's one on the busier streets to break the blocks into half, basically. And we actually went out in the field and noticed on the northwest side of the development, we noticed a speed dip. So there's actually an existing dip that's in the roadway, just like two or three lots to the north as you leave the subdivision. So we counted that as a speed or a traffic calming device. So I think this has adequate traffic calming now inside the subdivision.
Great, thank you.
And we also, if anyone from the neighborhoods here, the city repaved Maple Leaf Drive, and we had heard some complaints that the old speed tables were not, the four existing speed tables were not tall enough. We made sure that when they replaced them, they were adequate to slow people to 25 miles per hour. They're designed for that speed to allow snow plowing. If we design them like a parking lot speed bump, the snowplows will not be able to plow very well. So that's a little bit extreme. So if anybody has any complaints about those, please give me a call and let me know. Thanks.
Well, thank you. And Mr. Murray, just to clarify, the zoning has already gone through. All that we're looking at tonight is preliminary subdivision plat, so that basically limits the scope of what we're addressing. Is there anything that you would like to say to clarify that?
Right. Well, anytime you have a public hearing, of course, it's a two-way communication. You're providing information to the public. The public then comments on information back to you as a planning commission as to what they feel is relevant. And as you mentioned, the scope of the agenda item today is not one of approving or not approving, so to speak, of the subdivision. That was the zone change, which has already occurred. This is more a discussion tonight on the exact layout of the streets and lots. And there's obviously also a utility and drainage plan, so basically where the water and sewer lines and storm drainage goes. And as the traffic engineer, Mr. Baranowski, mentioned, it's the layout of the speed tables or basically specialized speed bumps and other features that are traffic calming and so forth. So essentially, it's the layout of the subdivision. And so typically, the comment that you had received from the public is whether they feel like those are the best layout, or if they feel like they have additional information that would be needed before the layout is approved by you as a planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Page?
Yes, one of the considerations that we need to take into account is that there might be a water line on the south end of the property. That's yet to be discovered, so we hope to find that sooner than later. And if there is a water line, how that might affect the layout of the preliminary subdivision plan.
There just isn't any record of that. It's been there for so long, it's kind of speculation.
My understanding is that one member of staff found a map some time ago that there could be a water line in this area. So we want to make sure that we know what's there, but we haven't discovered that yet.
Great, thanks. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Nelson, from engineering regarding that?
Oh, just regarding the water line, we were waiting to get field results on its exact location. And if it needs to be relocated or even continue in service. So once we get answers to our questions, we'll address those. I don't foresee any change of lot layout, but if so, I assume that if it's significant, we'll be bringing it back. Anyway, that'll be up to the city planner to determine whether it goes back to Planning Commission if it's a significant change.
Thank you. Any other questions for city staff? Seeing none, we'll open this up to the public hearing. If any of you would like to comment on this item, please feel welcome and encouraged to come forward at this time. Yes, please, sir. If you could please state your name and address for the public record?
Yes. My name is Frank Chaffin, and I live just adjacent to the proposal here on the, what would be the lower right-hand corner, just one, two houses over. Since this is going to be affecting us for some time, apparently, one question I'd like to ask is when is the construction supposed to commence? And what would be the estimated timeframe between phase one and phase two as far as beginning of construction?
Great, thank you. We'll make sure we get that addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and invite the applicant back up. Would you like to address the timeline for commencing construction through phase one, starting phase two, the end of construction timeframe?
Yes, we provided estimates for that. Is that in your staff report?
I'm looking for that right now.
So we did give an estimate to your staff, and so I think that information is in your backup. But with, provided we don't run into any obstacles that are unforeseen at this point, we'll start construction next building cycle, which will be sometime next, you know, after it stops snowing and freezing, provided we can get through the steps to get to a final subdivision plat and final approval of our plans. So we'd like to start in May next year. It'll take us four or five months to put in phase one improvements. If we experience sales at the pace that we currently anticipate, we'll just move right from phase one to phase two.
Very good. So weather-dependent and economy-dependent? I don't see any exact dates in the staff report, but then again, I know you can't pinpoint an exact date, but that should give a relative idea. So, next year.
For sure.
So can I ask?
Commissioner Green?
What's the overall anticipated construction time period for, assuming you went from phase one to phase two?
Are you saying until we get all the people moved in? Or are you just asking for the lot improvements?
Just roughly, I mean, I know it's based on economy and everything, but you guys have got to have some sort of projection about how long it would take to close out the neighborhood. I'm just curious.
Yeah, to close it all the way out, to have built all the houses. We anticipate in this subdivision, we'll sell one and a half homes per month. So it'll take us a couple of three years to get through all of these lots. Our price point is going to be in the 400s to low 500s.
Well, I'm not living there.
And so it's going to be a nice subdivision, but at that price point, it'll take a little bit of time to sell this many lots.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Well, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Any conversation, deliberation? Commissioner Green?
I have one question for the city attorney. When we're looking at the site plan, there's going to be the two roads that are kind of left open. And I'm going to assume the developer's going to put something across there so people don't drive out into the field. Can we require them to put something across there with a sign that says, "Reserve for future road", so that the people moving in will know that there's going to be some roads in there in the future?
That, right. And you're talking about the stub streets into what will eventually be phase two, right?
Yes.
That is actually something where we're going to have a discussion with city staff to make sure that any of these stubs in the future, not just this subdivision, but all subdivisions, have that proper signage. So, yeah. That definitely will be done.
Do we need to, should we add that as a condition to this if we think we need it? Or are we going to do that as?
We're doing that as a matter of course on all of our projects in the future.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion or a possible motion? Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Page, additional information?
There's a member of the public that might want to address the planning commission, if that's allowed.
For this, we'd have to suspend the rules and reopen the public hearing. Would that be appropriate, Mr. Murray?
Yeah, if you just have a motion, you can do that.
I'll move to reopen the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner England. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero to reopen the public hearing for anyone who would like to come forward at this time. Please, if you could please state your name and address for the public record. Thank you.
And thank you for that. I was only able to get here just now, so I don't know what was already discussed, but I am Diane Roberg, R-O-B-E-R-G. I live at 8409 South Meadowlark Lane. I have lived there for 32 years. I was the second-only person in that subdivision, so I've been there a very long time. And I've been very, very fond of my neighborhood, very proud of it. My husband and I, we're right at that dead end where the field goes into. We've always known that there'd be a possibility of a subdivision there someday. So I'm addressing that I am for the subdivision. I'm not against it in any way. I just wanted to let you know that I've run the Dance by D studio for 30 years, and we just celebrated. And I'm very proud of my little dance business. I have about 75 children through the week that come to my home for dance. A lot of these children are very little children. Their parents have to hold their little hands and come across the street. My big concern is our Meadowlark Lane is a long, long drive down to that spot, and it's also an extra, extra wide road. It's not as narrow as some streets. For years and years, we had trouble with people flying through there and busting around and going back out because they thought there was a through street. I worked with the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce to get a sign up there that said, "No through street", and that helped a little. But we know what's coming. And I am not, again, I'm not against the subdivision. I just want to see some speed bumps coming our way through there as well. Because I think on, is it Maple Leaf Way? There's already some speed bumps there now, but I think they were not there when that subdivision started, and they had to have them put in. We will have the same issue they did because ours is more of a straight shot through. And I'm a little concerned, I can't tell on your map right now, it doesn't turn immediately after Meadowlark. Is that correct? Is this Meadowlark on this end? Can you tell?
Yes. And just to let you know, I think you missed the discussion just prior to coming in, that there will be four speed bumps there, four speed tables.
Will there? Okay. That's really my biggest concern. Also...
Mr. Nelson might be able to give more input into that.
I want to clarify, the four speed bumps that were mentioned are within the subdivision. Outside of the subdivision, on Meadowlark Lane, which she is concerned about, we have been advised that we cannot require that of the developer. So the next best recourse would be to contact the traffic engineer and something that's available to all residences to apply for traffic calming measures. He has a program that he goes through where he does a study, counts the traffic, measures the speeds.
Correct.
And if there's enough traffic volume and speed, then it qualifies for city funds to be used on speed bumps. I don't know that it would meet those qualifications right now. It may not occur until after you get more residents living on that street.
I guess too, I shouldn't just say I'm concerned only for my daughters. Answer is I'm concerned for the small children, because as neighborhoods go up and down, now we see an influx of a lot of small children in our neighborhoods. So I know that that would be a very big concern. I have three little grandchildren that live across the street from me, too.
That's good to know about the children and the studio that you have, and that's something we can take into account. Again, I don't know if it will, it wouldn't affect the traffic study.
Right.
But there might be other measures that we could take, you know, to help to slow traffic down.
And is it possible I can just stay in touch with you in regards to this?
You may. You can reach out to the City Engineering Department. Bill Baranowski's the traffic engineer.
And I think I've met you, yes. I have.
And I'm Nate Nelson, the city engineer.
Perfect. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Roberg and Mr. Chaffin, for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll reclose the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission. Any other discussion or I'm amenable to a motion? Commissioner England?
It's a good project. I like it. I like what they've done as far as street layout, lot size. I think it's a beautiful neighborhood. Unless anybody's opposed, I'm going to start with a motion here.
Please.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the Planning Commission approve this application with the following condition: Preliminary subdivision plat layout may need to be revised and reapproved depending on finding from exploration of a possible water line.
Commissioner Luthy?
I'll second.
A motion by Commissioner England and a second by Commissioner Luthy. Do we have any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, let's please vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Best wishes with the subdivision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You too. Thank you very much. Happy holidays. Item number four on our agenda is a text amendment to amend the 2009 West Jordan City Code, Title 13, Chapter 5, Article C, Planned Development Zones. With citywide applicability, the city of West Jordan is our applicant, and Mr. Gardner has this this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. And so the PC and PRD zones, as of late, have got a lot of use in the city. Now, they have for the last few years. There's been some issues with the zones, both the planning commission, more of the planning commission and the council has brought up. And so hopefully, this amendment will address those concerns. And if it doesn't, please let me know so that we can include those in the amended text. Like I said in the pre-meeting, I don't necessarily feel like this needs to be forwarded tonight to the city council if you want to look at it over the next month or so. And I know that this will be hot on your list in December to look at this thing. But anyway, I'm saying that I'm not, this isn't a big rush. And so I'm just reading from page two of the staff report where I put bulleted changes or proposed changes to the ordinance. And probably the biggest is that now a master development plan must be approved before a person can make an application for a change in the PC zone, to the PC zone or the PRD zone. And what that does is it actually gets a planning document in front of the planning commission at the beginning where you can look at and plan out this planned community, rather than just these so-called nebulous concept plans where they're kind of conceptual, we might do this, we might not, we might build this many, we might not. And then it usually ends up in frustration when it finally comes back because sometimes they look exactly like what they've been proposed, and many times they don't look at all like what's been proposed at the zone change. So what this does is it really puts the planning in front of the change to a PC zone, which I think is a good thing. And so the minimum area for PRD zone, it used to be it was just up to whatever the city council determined in the PRD. And we had, you know, we have a few projects in the works right now that kind of met that criteria, and they're varying sizes, five, seven, three, 10 acres. And that always was a concern, I believe, to the planning commission, that they were kind of small. And it's, you know, really, you know, kind of didn't really meet the definition of planned residential development. So the proposal is to make a planned residential development a minimum of 20 acres and a maximum of 30 acres. And so what that will do is that will, you know, allow for the mixture of uses, the mixture of different types of housing densities. And so the minimum area for a PC zone is now 50 acres, and I've increased that to 200 acres because I believe that it's just, you wind up with a much better product when it's planned over a larger scale. And West Jordan has the, some very large tracts of property on the west side that are mostly owned by two or three different families. And so they don't just sell off 10 acres at a time or 20 acres at a time. It's usually in the hundreds of acres that they sell off. And so I think it gets the city a very good opportunity to have trail connectivity, preserve the natural areas that need to be preserved by allowing clustering of densities in other areas so we can preserve those, you know, as you get farther towards the Ochre Mountain, the washes become more deep and extreme. And I believe if they left natural with the ability to go through them on a trail system, it can be a very, very good thing for the city rather than just being, you know, have yards up to them and items like that. And so, excuse me. So the larger acreage, I think, also allows for more amenities and just not a big 50-acre house farm. It allows for parks and other type of amenities that will serve that particular community. Some of the other changes are setbacks and how accessory buildings would be allowed in there. Multifamily buildings right now are two stories or 35 feet. I've proposed the change to be three stories or 45 feet. Commercial buildings are, again, limited to 35 feet. But I think as we get farther west, sometime there may be some type of office use or retail in the bottom office on top. So I've increased that to 60 feet or five stories. And I think if you get a taller building out west, some of the views looking east would be absolutely astounding of the whole, you get the whole panoramic view of the Wasatch Front. And so I think there's a lot of potential users out there that really don't appreciate. I think a lot of people like being close to the mountains because it kind of gives you a sense of, you know, you're kind of overtaken by the mountains because they're so close. But when you see a panoramic view of them, it's really quite outstanding on the west side. If you haven't been out there in some of those high hills, it's quite amazing. We really do live in a beautiful state. I mean, and so in the PRD zone, all open space in a PRD zone has to be in maintained parks. There's no natural open areas. And so it really will allow the planning commission to be more selective on the sites that are rezoned to PRD. Because if it looks like, you know, they're not going to be able to put a maintained park on 30% slope, then maybe that's not the right property for a planned residential development. I think if we get back to the roots of the word PRD, it is a planned residential development and not just houses wherever they can fit them in. And so I think that that will, may take some of the frustration away from staff and the planning commission when some of these proposals that go in that are just like, you know, this open space is here, but it's not usable because it's on such a steep slope, or it's a utility corridor, that type of thing. And you know exactly what I'm talking about. The minimum open space in a PC zone has been increased... The minimum open space in a PC zone has been increased to fifteen percent or twenty percent instead of fifteen percent. And I think that that really will uh lead to better planning. It will give the opportunity for the planning commission to approve more usable open space amenities, better trail systems without really sacrificing much density on the developer's part because I believe if it's a nice development, um, and it's well planned, I don't, I've never seen this body that gets too hung up on just lot size alone. What they're look, what I believe the planning commission is looking for is a good development that makes sense that has amenities for, that will keep people living in that community. And then five percent of that twenty percent needs to be in park area again. It can't just be uh twenty percent of, well, that ravine, a big giant ravine counts for all twenty percent of it. Well, it may, but they still need to provide five percent uh in a park or or usable area for the residents living there. Now, whether that, whether those parks get dedicated to the city or they uh remain maintained by the NHOA, uh that would really be uh up to the city council to determine how they wanna do those in the future. And I I don't think that most residents out there want open space and parks. It it just seems to be, it becomes a budgetary and a maintenance issue with the elected representatives, which which is good that they're they're taking, taking it serious that we just don't build things that will continue to be a cash cow. But if so, then uh the development needs to set up a good HOA that can take care of those. You know, the best example of that type of development I can think of close to us is Ivory Highlands in Taylorsville. Uh, you know, they have a pole, clubhouse, trail system, open space, and it's all maintained by homeowners association fee system. So there's no, there's no reason why that can't be done here if the city doesn't wanna have a dedicated open space. And then finally, for every five hundred residential units, uh they need to provide two of the following from this list, a minimum two thousand square foot swimming pool uh with the decking and a pool house. And I think if we don't clarify that, then what you'll get is a two thousand square foot cement hole in the ground. I'm being skeptical and facetious, but uh it seems unfortunately you have to kind of be very, very specific about what you want. Uh pedestrian trail system around the entire development, through the development. That may need to be flushed out a little bit because uh Commissioner Luthy did bring up a good point. You know, they put in a forty-five foot asphalt walkway. Well, there's my trail, you know. And so we've need to uh look at these things carefully. And then along collector streets, if they wanna make the collector streets in their their development look nice, uh you know, kind of a daybreak look with the uh street trees, a lot of street trees, wide park strips, uh wide sidewalks. They certainly can do that. And then a minimum of three thousand square foot centrally located clubhouse. The reason I put s- minimum square footage is on the pools and the clubhouses is because I'm not saying that most developers, I believe ninety percent of them wouldn't do this, but there are some unscrupulous ones will would put up a tough shed and say, that's my clubhouse and so. Uh, but I think most of them are trying to sell the the community. And again, that goes back to size that uh they, if they're taking on something this size, then they really have to make it nice and sellable. And then the last one is uh other items uh deemed similar in nature and intensity as proposed by the developer and approved by the planning commission and city council. So I don't know what that would be, but you know, you don't um trade a couple of benches for a swimming pool. I think this was some of the comments we've had before. Well, they get a density buyout for two barbecues, you know. Uh, maybe if they wanna put, I don't know, something, you know, an entire, you know, barbecue on every corner. Something like that. But but you know, that really does give the the planning commission the ability to determine what is, you know, similar in intensity because um you know, and Commissioner Pack, you know, you you love to play tennis and you're very good at it and but you know, I I know it's not the the popular sport as it was in the seventies and eighties and that. It's like, it seems like there was a lot of more tennis courts back then. People still build them, but not at the level they used to. And so maybe there's something that's taken its place a little bit. I don't know that. Or maybe tennis will always be the thing that people love.
Pickleball courts now, Larry.
And so anyway, that's um, that's the bulk of the the changes of the PC zone. And if I'd love to hear your comments, your suggestions or additions, uh because I really think that this is moving the city in the right direction.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gardner, for the thoughtful preparation and presentation. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I since this is my last chance to add something. I I would really like to see, uh, when you're talking about trees, twenty-five feet on center, I'd like to see a caliper. You know, a certain caliper so they're just not putting in really small trees that maybe are not gonna make it. Yeah, and you know, so that the umbrella at full growth really gives you some protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Of course, you know, I've been the biggest opponent of our PC zone anyway, cause because of some of the issues that you've talked about.
You say proponent or opponent?
Oh, opponent. You know, yeah, you. Yeah, no P there. Um, here's a couple of my thoughts. Um. Overall, I think this is a, I think this is a great direction. I think it 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 does, it does a lot of different uh things that we need to. Just a couple, just a couple of things that maybe we can look at, and maybe it just goes in the overall intent. One of them, some of it may just go over in the overall intent. But I think for the overall intent, when we're talking about planned commer- planned communities and it's got commercial, I know we've had that discussion that the commercial's an afterthought. If we can, if we could integrate some wording that says, "Commercial has to be part of, you know, part of the design." It, you know, it's just not segregated out in a corner. I don't know the best wording for that, but something to the effect that commercial's integrated and not an afterthought. Um, the other one on the intent is that given the push for affordable housing, I think that giving particularly a planned community, I think having an intent statement that in the intent statement that affordable housing ought to be part of that mix would would help us with the standing in the legislature. Is that terrible to say that? And so if we can address affordable howdi- housing, particularly in the in the PC zone, cause it's so big, and I think affordable wow, that was weird. Affordable housing could be worked in without a lot of issues. And then the last, last comment I had, and then if I see anything else, I'll send it to you in email. On that one where you were talking about the trees, the the Commissioner Hanson talked about the caliper, I I'd like to be able to, um, so that they're not, so that, and and I think you have, but I think we just need to be clear in that one that those ten-foot park strips with the twenty-five feet center, those don't count as part of the open space. And so maybe we can clarify that because I don't want them to put a great big park strip down the middle of a a development and say, oh, that's our open space. And and then, oh, and then one other comment, you know, on number five, where you talked about the other similar items in intensity. I think you could, I think you could add a couple of like, you know, you could say like not, you know, as things like a what's that? Lazy, the lazy riv- lazy rivers or gazebos or con- concert gazebo, you know, like Draper Park's uh whatever. You know, you could, you could include some things to give people ideas and splash pad, couple of those kind of ideas that might help with uh their creativity, if that's what we're looking for.
Park or parks.
Park or parks. And then if there's anything else, I'll send it to you in an email. Um, the and finally, I think that as we look at making the PRD twenty to thirty z- thirty acres, I think that may give us an opportunity that I know we talked about this three or four years ago. But maybe it's something that we we resurrect the idea of an infill, some sort of infill development zone for those ten or uh those ten to twenty acre developments. And and I have to tell you that with those in, with an infill development zone, I like the, I distill the the idea of five percent dedicated to an open park and some of those kinda things. But I think maybe that's time to relook at an infill, because we don't have an infill zone and PRD's always been what we've done as a fallback on the infill zone. And if we're gonna make PRD bigger, maybe it's time to resurrect the idea of a of an infill zone. Did that, hopefully that, hopefully that makes sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinney.
Um, I have a couple of responses to that, but I wonder if we would wanna do the public hearing part of this really quick, close that, and then we can get back to discussion. Unless unless people have questions for staff on this.
Any other comments on questions for staff? Really, the applicant? Thank you. We will open this to the public comment section. Anyone, anyone at all. Come on down. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section. Continue with Commissioner Quinney.
Okay, I've I figured that would be the case, but you know, let's keep procedure in check. Kinda just following up on what he said. On the affordable housing, I wonder if we almost include it as part of an incentive package to include that, that we allow the additional, whatever else. You know, instead of just saying, let's just have affordable housing in here, let's give them a benefit for doing it. Just some kind of incentive plan. I don't know what that would look like. That's something for people much smarter than me to discuss. Um, and then the other one, and I wonder if we need to include any language specific to where the commercial entities stay with, stay within these. I mean, isn't that part of the reason why we're gonna have these master development plans? We'll get to hash that out here before we get to that point. So I don't know if we need to specifically call out commercial in in this. I don't know if that's what you were thinking or not.
I'll put some, I'll put something in there that protects us so that we at least, so it's not overlooked by the developer.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy.
Thank you. Um, I don't know that I love the idea of the initiative to try to get them excited about putting the affordable housing in, cause I think that we'll end up sacrificing something we actually want to do that. So if we're going to go that route, then I think we need to make something, instead of you get to pick two, you get to pick three. I mean, somehow you gotta tighten it the other direction in order to be able to give them an allowance, because otherwise you're gonna end up sacrificing. And what what's the point of that? That's my, that's my thought.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Well, and my thought with the, my thought with the uh the commercial was that if we set an expectation upfront and then we just, we and we talk about it in the overall intent, that gives a developer an idea that we're looking for, you know, to give, so that they know what a look and feel is before they get beat up and they come and bring the master development in. That was that was the only reason why to, why to say, hey, put it in the intent language if that made sense. So that was, that's that's my thought on that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Now, Mr. Gardner, you were saying that we don't necessarily need to decide anything or vote on anything. Would you rather that this be continued to the first meeting in January, which just for everyone's remembrance, we don't have a meeting December eighteenth, and then we won't have a meeting January eighth. So this would be looking at January twenty-second?
January fifteenth.
Or sorry, sorry, the first day of the month is a Tuesday. Um, so that that's why we don't have a meeting, cause it's New Year's Day. So we'd be looking at January fifteenth. Does that timeline fit what you're looking for?
I would rather, I'd rather make these changes and then um take the comments I've heard and kind of work them into the ordinance. Um, I'd rather get, get as much of it right at the beginning uh than there's no reason to rush it, is what I'm saying. If anybody comes in and wants to do a proposal for a planned development now, then um, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong Duncan, but they will now be under, since we've started this process, uh they'll now be under, they'll have to follow this ordinance until.
Yeah, what you're referring to is the pending ordinance rule. So since you've discussed it tonight, it's been on your agenda. Then if a subsequent application comes in sometime after today, and as long as as you recommend and the council approves an ordinance within the next hundred and eighty days, basically six months, then you can retroactively apply this ordinance back to that application. Even though the application came in before the ordinance was passed because you started the process today.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Hatch, would you like something? Yeah, I didn't, I saw it on and off and. Okay, Commissioner Green first and then Commissioner Hatch.
Since this was agendized, do we need to make a formal motion to move it to the agenda on the, or do we need not?
No, you really don't. I mean, it's, it could just be placed on the, on the calendar for the, for the January meeting. Yeah, no, you, but you're not doing a public hearing again, right? You're just gonna have it as a business item, right? So then you wouldn't have to put anything in the paper, right? Yeah, so, cause you had your public hearing tonight and uh you wouldn't have to have another public hearing. I mean, you could if you wanted, but as long as you're not doing another public hearing, there'd be nothing to notice or nothing to table. You could just direct staff to put it on as a business item at your next agenda.
Well, and as we've talked about in the past, I remember us discussing, well, it might actually backfire if we did have a second public hearing without noticing people a second time that there is gonna be a public hearing. So just a business item would probably be the most beneficial.
That's what I recommend because, yeah, once you've put it, listed it on the agenda as a public hearing, then you've created a reasonable expectation that somebody can show up and so, but keep in mind, you know, that even though you don't have a public hearing, you can still do your motion to suspend the rules and get public comment anyway. And that's probably the preferred way of doing it. Then you're not stuck with an agenda that says something that you're potentially not following. So, I mean, because obviously it's better to, you can always allow something uh comment beyond what's on the agenda. What you don't wanna do is not allow con- uh comment when it appears that it is on the agenda.
Great. Thank you for that directive. Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you very much. I just had a question on the infill. It was brought up. Out of curiosity, how much infill is there in the West Jordan area? Is this a, uh, do we need to create an infill zone? Are we leaving a voided area that isn't addressed?
Well, there is uh kind of an infill zone right now, but I'd like to rework it. There's always um there's always the two to five acres, the five to ten acres that's behind Grandma's house that nobody knows is there that uh that people, original owners pass on and then they wanna sell it off. You know, I can think of like twenty acres off of Thirteen Hundred West and there there's always pieces of property around the city that someday could be uh developed. Most of them, a lot of the vacant stuff is commercially on the land use map and commercially zoned, but there are some residential pieces. And so uh I think, I think that it is a a good tool to have. Um, I've never uh never mind having tools. You can ask my wife. I'm always buying stuff. Whatever.
Thank you. That that answers my question.
Great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move this to January fifteenth.
And bear in mind, anyway, there'll be another public hearing at the city council meeting. And so if somebody I, on text amendments, you really don't get a lot of public comment. You just don't. Text amendments and general plan creations, you know, when people should be there, they're not there.
They're not alluring attractive enough. Well, thank you. A couple of additional items for this evening, since we serve at the the appointment well in pleasure of mayor and city council. Uh, yes, did did you need to um leave, Mr. Murray? Okay, um, I was contacted by Councilmember Burton asking my thought, and so I didn't wanna just give him my thought. I thought our thought is always wiser than one person's thought on the idea of having an alternate for planning commission. I know we do that for board of adjustment. I sit on the board of adjustment and we have an alternate in case someone can't attend a meeting, then that alternate is called upon as a a full-fledged voting member. The alternate could come to all meetings if desired. And he just wanted to receive our input, because this is agendized for city council's meeting tomorrow night. And I told him that I would get back to him. And I, I know there's, I can think of some potential pros and cons with it. I, I know in our six years, I told him, I don't recall ever having a meeting where we didn't have at least a quorum in attendance. But then again, if every seat is filled, then you do get the benefit of various perspectives. So what are your thoughts, pros and cons, on having an alternate serve on planning commission? Commissioner Luthy?
I don't think it's necessary. I think that, as you just stated, that we're here. I mean, a person is gone from time to time, but we're, we're here. As far as the additional input, I think it could get a little confusing. So personally, I think I'm against it.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinney?
I think I was initially for this, but as I think back, last year, we didn't name the third person who got voted is, is an alternate, but she was the backup, and I, I, we haven't seen a need for her this year. And so I don't know that we need to, to really expand just to having one or two alternates. I'm not necessarily opposed to the idea, but I just don't see a necessity for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatch?
I will agree with the my, the comments of the prior commissioners. I don't believe there's a, a need for it either. I think we've all been here, and if someone's missing, it's one person. And I think if I were the alternate, how I would feel sort of discombobulated, like not really understanding the issue. There's a lot of continuity that goes from meeting to meeting, and if you're not involved, I think you'll lose that.
Thank you. Commissioner England?
Exactly. My thoughts, you know, I, I don't see the need. And if you're not here, you're not participating, you're not up to speed every meeting, and it's really hard to just jump into this seat, you know, one or even two potentially alternates and, and, you know, seamlessly insert yourself. So as far as the alternate that was named last year, my understanding of that was in the event that Matt or I were to leave mid-season, if you will, everything comes back to sports. So if we were to leave mid-season, then she would fill in. I believe it was a lady, but...
Instead of conducting interviews all over again, that was already determined that, in the first round of interviews, that that...
Correct.
Person would then take over if someone resigned.
But to have an alternate here every week, I think is...
Okay, and I'm, thank you, and I'm unsure the scope of exactly what they're thinking. So what about the idea, I'm just trying to brainstorm, if that alternate were to come to every meeting, but not be a voting, voting member sitting on the stand, then the continuity wouldn't be lost. I'm unsure if that's the intent of, of what's been offered, but just to flush that out. Any additional thoughts? Commissioner Green?
See, I agree with, I agree with Commissioner England in the fact that what you just mentioned, unless the person's at every meeting, it, it, it destroys the continuity, it destroys the history. I mean, and, you know, there's, you know, you, you think about your six years on the, on the planning commission. You went back, you go back six years, heck, West Jordan City was, that population then was forty-five thousand people, or a hundred and ten, or whatever. You know, you've got a lot of continuity, and, and you've spread that continuity with us at the pre-meetings and everything else. And I am, that, that's my concern, is that, and, and if the person, if the person shows up for every meeting, and they're the, I, I, I'll use the sports analogy, they're the end of the bench, guard of the water bottle, and tackle anybody who gets close. They're not, it, it's gonna be hard for them, I believe, to feel engaged. You know, if you're, if you're sitting on the bench all the time, in a ba- in a, you know, the tennis, you know, if you're sitting at the bench and, and on a sports team, and you're down at the, the end of the bench, it's like, well, okay. And then the coach says, "Go on in," and then, you know, how does that work? I, I, I think, I, I think it would... I mean, I understand, I, I think I understand why, you know, we, why somebody would want seven votes on a lot of these things, but at the end of the day, I don't think we've had that many... Even though we have all differing opinions, and we've had some six-one votes, we've had some five-two votes. We've never had, I don't think we've ever, and we've had some four-three votes. We've never had a tie. And if we had a tie, okay, let's, let's look at what that really means. And, and, and it, it doesn't pass, which means that on most items, it just means that it goes to the city council with a negative recommendation. Well, once the city council not been worried about overruling us. You know, it's happened in the past, it can happen again. I...
You find them their friends?
No, you know what I mean, though. The city council's overruled us and voted, voted, voted o- opposite on us on certain occasions. If we have a three-three tie, I don't see where that becomes any big deal. I really don't. It, it just means that it's a, a negative recommendation at that point to the city council, and they, they can take the three-three tie as a, as an ambivalent split, split decision, and they get a break the tie, you know? So that, that's my thoughts.
Thank you.
To me, and, and then if you make them come every week, that's just an additional cost to the city. You know, the, whatever we get, I don't even, I don't even know what we get paid anymore, so... You know, it's an additional cost to the city to, to have the person show up to all the meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Yeah, I would agree. I think that the idea of having an alternate in case somebody has to move or something happens that would take you out, I think is a fantastic idea. But to have somebody sit in the back, I wouldn't be engaged. I would be on my phone doing my own thing, even if I could talk myself into wanting to come to just sit and listen every week. I mean, that's, I don't know, I, I still am against it.
Thank you. Commissioner England?
Not to beat a dead horse, but the psyche of this alternate, look to our court systems. When they pick an alternate juror, they don't tell them they're an alternate until the, the end of the jury is completed, simply for that reason of engagement. You just would not be engaged. It takes a very special person to be engaged, not knowing that your, your vote counts or you're gonna be asked to do anything, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. Although we're highly paid to be up here, you know, I'm really looking forward to not having that money, you know? But I, it would become a budgetary item if we said that they should be to every meeting. Then it becomes a budgetary item for the city council, so...
Well, very good. Thank you for all that feedback. Commissioner Green?
I'll, I'll throw one other thing in. I, I, I don't have any problems that when they, when we interview somebody, saying, "Hey, this is, you're, you're the alternate selection. If we have a vacancy, we don't need to hot, we don't need to, we don't need to post and, and select again, because we've done the interview process." If that's what we're trying to, to avoid, I think that's different than just an alternate that sits on. And if we, if we do that, I don't have any problems with that. It's the other stuff that...
Very good. Thank you. And then just in conclusion, I'll strive to make this quick. I know this is being broadcast and...
Oh, well, hold on.
Yes. Oh, business item.
Sorry, not a business item. I, the city, the mayor asked us to talk or figure out an ADU strategy. I don't know where we are in that process. Is that something you need us to be working on? Is staff working on it? Where are we with the ADU?
No, we're working on that right now until you'll, you'll have your chance to work on that. And then for you, I just want to say to Commissioner Chairman Pack and Commissioner Hanson that it's been a pleasure working with both of you. I mean, this goes for all the planning commission. I've never been associated with a finer group of planning commissioners in all my career. You guys are dedicated. You, you really do have great ideas. I think you have the best, you put the city's best interest out front there. You're not, you're not looking out for any particular friend, developer, or anything like that. And so I appreciate all of you, and I've appreciated working with many of you for the last few years, particularly Chairman Pack. You know, you've been around ever since I've been an employee here, and so... But I know you're still on the board of adjustment, so I still get to see you once every six months when we hold a meeting. Mr. Hanson too, you know, you were on the council before the, the planning commission, and so I've always have the utmost respect for both of you. And, you know, I wish that terms didn't come to an end, but they do. We're not, you're not Roosevelt, either one of you, and so you gotta go. And so with that, I, there's a couple of cards that have been signed by staff, you know, the development department and the planning commission. I wanna, wanna give both of you. I wish I could say there's a five-thousand-dollar check in there, but there's not. The best, best you're gonna get is the cookies you got, and so... And so I do appreciate all of you and the, the hard work you do. It's, it really does make my job a lot easier, and I, I want to tell you that, because, you know, when we have things like work meetings and you say flat out, "No, we're not gonna consider losing any commercial property right now," no matter how much they try to sell the Amazon effect and stuff like that. That's good, because it makes my job easier. Then when people come in, I don't have to, "Well..." I know, exactly. I said, "No, I'm not gonna support it, because the planning commission won't support it." And so, you know, that's just one example. And so thanks, thanks to all of you. And I'll bring these cards up to David and Judy.
Very kind of you. Thank you for those kind words. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I just want to take a personal privilege and, and say how much I've enjoyed working on the planning commission for three years. I've got to know new friends, old friends, and it's, I think we have a great planning commission. I hope you continue to do as well as we have done, because I think some really great decisions, whether the city council thinks so or not, have been made here. And it's been a real pleasure. I, there's been no arguments, there's been no, city council is a little different. And so I, I enjoyed my four years on city council, and I've enjoyed my three years here. So I just want to thank all of you and the planning staff, because they've been great to work with. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Murray, you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I've worked for a, a number of cities, and I've never seen before this unanimous or near-unanimous attendance at every meeting. It's amazing. It really is. You can't take it for granted. There have been cities I've worked for where we had a hard time getting a quorum for certain meetings, and we had to have alternates, you know, and maybe you don't need them here, but, but in a lot of cities you do. And that's, it's not just your attendance. I think it's your commitment level. You, you're always prepared. It really is awesome, and it's too bad that all the residents of the city don't realize how above average you are. But, but likewise, I've, I've enjoyed working with all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
I would just like to echo those comments. I've worked at a number of jurisdictions, and this planning commission has been exceptional. Thank you.
It's our pleasure, and I'm grateful for people that have opened the doors of opportunity for us to serve. You know, someone's always a gatekeeper, and hopefully, you know, we can pay it forward. And because it's being broadcast, I just mention a call to service for others. There's over a hundred thousand residents, and I know some of us serve on multiple boards or, or commissions, just because we're having some difficulty filling those. And it has been an absolute joy and privilege being here. And it grants an insider perspective that I don't think you can have when you're an outsider looking in. What, what I mean by that is, in every interaction with any city staff, elected officials, city council, mayor, everything has always been respectful, and I know that these are good people, just trying to do the best they can. And I know you can't please all the people all the time. It would be a disservice to try to do that. And whenever you're trying to serve someone, and you kind of have to stick your neck out, and it makes it longer for someone to chop off, people will always question your motives. They'll always be detractors. But hopefully, the joy of, of service outweighs that. And I would hope that everyone could hear this from all of us, that as we have said, we've worked very well together. And people are just trying to do their best, and it's been an honor and privilege to serve at the will and pleasure of the city council and mayor, grateful to the commission and staff and our families allowing us to serve. I've been in West Jordan for twenty-one years, and my family made it a prayerful consideration. Where should we move? Because I knew it would make a difference in who my children meet and their peers and, and the service we give. And, and I can see the blessings of being here for twenty years, and hopefully I've given, I've done more good than harm. But yes, no personal agenda. I think we're all just trying to do all the good we can, for as long as we can, for all the people we can. And I, I wish everyone, wish everyone the best. Thank you very much. And for those listening, please tender your application to serve on any commission or, or board. We need good people with, with good ideas. All of us have such different backgrounds, yet, yet we are unified in respect for each other. We look at things a different way, and I think the city is better for that with all of our different backgrounds. So thank you, everyone, and happy holidays. And can, can I drop the mic? Do I drop, do I drop the mic, or do I just drop, do I drop the gavel?
Go ahead, Dave.
I'll just... No, thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council. Thank you, residents. Thank you, planning commission and staff. Best wishes to, to all of you. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Commissioner Quinney?
I move to adjourn.
Any... Great. We stand adjourned until January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Happy holidays.
Will we miss Mr. Chairman?